Put those in the right of way on Jackson Road and Wallace Road. Six, we just sort of, we've said the same thing, just said it a little bit more differently. So I think you're talking about left turns out of the property onto Jackson.
This is your list here?
Yeah. Yeah. This is exactly what the planning commission approved last time we were down here, with the exception of the last sentence of nine that they added during the hearing.
Can everyone hear me? Can everyone hear me? Yes, no? Okay. It's time to begin our October planning and zoning meeting. I'd ask you at this time to please silence your cellphones if you haven't already, and we'll dive right into the work. The first item on the agenda is actually going to need to be amended, and I'll direct our commissioners' attention to page three of your booklet. Under the case petition there, 2308Z, we need to add two variances that we're going to discuss as well. That's 23-26V and 23-26VA. We will discuss 2308Z first, and then we will discuss the variances secondly. So I'll entertain a motion to amend the agenda to include those two variances following 2308Z.
So moved by the chairman.
Okay, have a motion.
I second it.
Those in favor signify, raise your right hand. Okay, it is amended. Okay. Let's begin. 2308Z, Lillian Anglin, William R. Woodward Jr., and John P. Woodward, and Parks, W. Colwell, senior owners. Hillwood Development Company, LLC, agent. Approximately 6.14 acres located in landlots 25 and 26 of the second land district. The applicant is requesting to rezone from AR1 Agricultural and Residential and R2 Single Family Residential District to C1C Manufacturing Light. Do we have someone here to speak to this?
Mr. Chairman, if you wanted to, go ahead and call, subject to approval of the board, go ahead and consolidate these for hearing, and then you'll have to vote on them separately.
Okay.
And go ahead and call the others.
Okay.
Assuming that has the motion approval of the commission.
Yes, we're good with that. The language for the first variance is to allow loading docks to be located in front of the building. That's 23-26V. And the second one, 23-26VA, is a variance to allow for parking to be located in the front of the building also. Okay, we're consolidated, amended, approved. So if you would, state your name and address for the record.
Is there any objection to having these from the other, from the commission to having these consolidated here?
I have no objection.
No.
All right, just checking.
Thank you.
Name and address for the record.
Den Webb, 1105 West Peachtree Street, Atlanta, Georgia, 30309, here on Bath Hillwood Development. Let me introduce Alex Carr, who is also in attendance on behalf of Hillwood and is ready and willing to take your questions if, as necessary. So, we may look familiar to you guys, we were here last month, and at the time, the only thing on the agenda was the rezoning request, which you guys voted to approve. In the interim, we have talked about variances. As you guys know, and as you can tell from my handout, or may remember actually, that this property is part in Spalding County, but part in Butts County. During the Butts County portion of the rezoning, we were able to deal with some variances through a development agreement. We can't do that here, so, and we realized that sort of after the fact, so after we were here last time, we hurriedly filed an application to add two variances to the request, and that's why we're here tonight. Let me just briefly touch on sort of the property again. If you look at the first page of my handout, you'll see the site. As I just mentioned, the area in red is the Spalding County property, that totals about almost 24 acres. The area in green is the Butts County property, and it totals about 65 acres. If you turn to the second page of my handout, you'll get a little closer view of the Spalding County properties. There are three tracks that you'll see highlighted on page two. As you guys know, you have an Arthur K. Bolton overlay. It covers property that actually fronts Arthur K. Bolton Highway, and it actually fronts, or it also covers property within 750 feet of that right of way. And if you look at the third page of my handout, you'll see the overlay marked. So the area in red is the area 750 feet from the road, and the absolute tip of our southernmost track touches that area. We are within the 750 feet by literally a matter of feet. So one of the three tracks actually does touch the Arthur K. Bolton overlay, or at least is within 750 feet of the road, and so we are bound to the requirements of that overlay. And the two conditions that I've come to talk to you guys tonight about really are, just relate to the overlay itself. If you turn to the fourth page of my handout, you'll see the site plan. This is the same site plan we discussed last time we were here, but we discussed it in a different way. There are a ton of challenges on this site. Let me kind of point them out through the site plan itself. The property is oddly shaped. There are seven sides to this roughly 96 acres. We've got a pond right in the middle of the property. You'll also notice that we've got portions of streams on the east side and the west side of the site. And equally important, and this is a little bit harder to tell, but between the two gray buildings is an easement. That's 130-foot utility easement that both Georgia Power and Atlanta Gaslight Control. So, we've got a lot of conditions on this property that we sort of inherited that make it hard to develop the site really in a reasonable way, and that's the primary reason we're here. Going back to the site plan, you'll see the two buildings in gray. There's a third building on the right-hand side of the page that's in white. So the two gray buildings are buildings we plan to build now. The building on the right in white is a future build. And just to kind of help the conversation today, looking at the southernmost gray building, we call that Building 100. So, to us, the front of that building is the north side. This is a front-loaded distribution facility, and the front of that building technically is on the north side of Building 100. And you'll notice that's where the, we have truck parking, that's where the trucks will load, and just to the left of that is a little bit of employee parking that you see on the side of the building between that side and, I think that's Wallace Road. If you look at Building 200, which is the one to the north of Building 100, it's the same configuration. Again, the front of that building technically is on the north side of Building 100. And you'll notice that's where the, we have truck parking, that's where the trucks will load, and just to the left of that is a little bit of employee parking that you see on the side of the building between that side and, I think that's Wallace Road. If you look at Building 200, which is the one to the north of Building 100, it's the same configuration. Again, the front of that building technically is on the north side, that's where the loading will occur, and the employee parking is predominantly to the south of that building.
Can we see that, what you're describing? Do we have a picture of that?
I've got a handout that I gave to them. I've got some extras, I think. Do you have any extras? Pardon me?
We'd like to have a handout.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Do you have it electronic?
I do not have it electronic, don't. So, looking at the building on the right, the white building, that's Building 300, the front of that building is actually on the east side. And interestingly about that building, you'll notice that there's actually a lot between the front of that building and Jackson Road to our east. So we're actually, we do not control that lot. There's land between our building and the right-of-way there. The employee parking for Building 300 is proposed on the east side of the building. This is a rear-load facility, so the truck parking and the truck loading will occur on the west side. And it is our intent, again, to park employees on the east side behind that lot, about 200 feet away from the right-of-way. As was mentioned at the beginning of this presentation, under the overlay, the parking is supposed to be at the rear of the building. And you also are not supposed to have loading docks on the front of the building. We have never really been clear whether we need variances for these. You can tell from the orientations of these buildings, you know, for example, the truck loading really occurs on what we call the front, what I think arguably is the side of these buildings. You've got, on Building 100, the truck loading's on the north. On Building 200, the truck loading's on the north. On Building 300, the truck loading is on the west. We do think we need a variance for the parking on the west side of Building 100. And just so you know, you know, this is a big piece of property represented on a very small piece of paper, but the closest point of that parking lot to Wallace Road to our west is 360 feet. So it's, you know, significantly more than a football field. We're talking about a significant distance here, and the overlay does require us to screen parking over there. So ultimately, what we're really asking for is just to be able to build the configuration that you guys saw last month and that you voted on to approve in our rezoning request. So, we've kind of gone back and forth whether we even need to file this application. We are under incredibly difficult time constraints. So out of an abundance of caution to make sure there was not a delay later on, we went ahead and filed this request in the interim between our last visit and now. So, that is our request. We're asking for two variances. We want to be able to park and load these buildings as shown on the site plan. As you know, staff has reviewed the request and has recommended approval. We hope you do the same tonight. If you look at the last page of my exhibit, these are the same conditions that you guys approved the rezoning to. But if you look at number nine, we added some language that was discussed during the hearing. Predominantly, it's the last sentence of number nine, so there were 25-foot buffers required on Wallace and Beulah Roads, and we asked to have a carve-out or an exception for some minor intrusions on the Beulah side. And you guys added this language, which I've now typed into the conditions we're proposing. "The areas of intrusion with frontage on Beulah Road will require enhanced landscaping, subject to the staff's approval of the landscaping plan and also approval of an amended site plan." So that, again, was sort of a paraphrase of what you guys had said when we were here last time, and that has been added to the conditions that I propose. So, I think I'll stop there. I'm happy to take any questions you have. I'll reserve my time, and we'd ask for your recommendation of approval, subject to the conditions on page five of my handout. Thank you.
Okay. Any of the commissioners up here have a question for him?
Yeah, Mr. Webb. Why didn't whoever does your industrial design have that particular quirk in mind?
I missed the first part of your...
Okay, why did not whoever the firm is that does your industrial design not know about that part of the ordinance? The reason I'm asking that is the commissioner who originally appointed me to these boards was Martha McDaniel. This Arthur K. Bolton overlay is her handiwork, and I am the only commissioner left that was here when she did it, so I am here in her stead. My question is, why didn't they know about that ahead of time?
Well, let me give you a little bit of the history here, because when we first filed, we had the, we had frontage on Arthur K. Bolton. So you'll notice that there's a big area below our site that's about 30 acres. Our original site plan included that land, but when we went through due diligence, we found out there are wetlands and other things that really make that portion of the site not buildable. So we removed that property from the development, and we were hoping, to be honest, since we're only about five feet, we're still, you know, we are 765, or 45 feet off of the road, we were hoping we would get an exception to the Arthur K. Bolton overlay because we're only about five feet into it. But again, through more conversation, we realized we wouldn't, and we realized that dealing with these variances through a development agreement wasn't an option, so we're here. But, again, we've got one of three lots that just barely touches. And if you look at the third page of my handout, I mean, it's hard to even tell where those colors match, right? They're just, they're point-to-point. So I understand what you're saying.
No, my question was, why didn't they know about this before we got this far down?
Well, I think, number one, because we were focused on a different piece of property, right? We had a much larger tract of land, and there was no question at that point that the Arthur K. Bolton overlay did apply. Number two, you know, as we've gone through and identified different variances, again, you know, I'm not, I'm still not clear whether we need a variance for the loading, right? Again, we're not between the edge of the building and the road. We're just, but we are on the front of the building, which is what the overlay says. So I think arguably...
What does council think? Do they need a variance?
Frank, ask, finish with the questions. I can explain why we're coming, this is coming to you, as a variance, as opposed to why, how Butts County handled it. I'm checking right now.
So the one variance we believe we really do need now is just for that tiny bit of parking on the west side of Building 100. And again, it's 360 feet off the road, we can put trees and other things there to screen it. It's just, it seems like a reasonable request, honestly.
Thank you.
Frank, I'll have an answer for you by the time, if there are other people to speak...
Thank you, Mr. Webb.
No. Give me one second.
I think the answer to my question is, they just didn't.
Yeah, well, hold on.
The real answer is, in addition to the change to the site plan, we had variances we needed to get in Butts County under the same, a similar overlay, and they let us do it through a development agreement without having to come in front of a planning commissioner or ZBA. We were able to put it in an agreement, and because the BOC signed it, that actually, you know, gave us variances. And we didn't realize until later that we wouldn't be able to do that here. We were, we've not ever been on the same track with Butts County, because when we first, you know, decided to pursue this application, you guys were under a moratorium. So we filed first in Butts County, we went through DRI in Butts County, we've already been zoned in Butts County, and, you know, we were hoping that the way it worked there was the way it was going to work here, but it didn't play out that way. And frankly, the county really helped us in letting us, you know, file this variance application, you know, and get back in front of you guys tonight, so we do appreciate that. That was an accommodation.
I'm good for the present.
When, all right, when this came up, and because of our moratorium back in the spring, Hillwood went to Butts County first.
Correct.
All right. Butts County, like Henry County, tends to use development agreements to deal with certain issues related to site plan and development. All right. We do not do that as a general rule. And the reason is because we have very specific requirements for the approval of a variance. And a variance, I'll take the blame for this or the credit, depending upon how it works out. The variance procedure in, under our ordinance requires a decision by the county. All right? And under the new zoning procedure statute that we enacted, the variance being part of a rezoning application, or tied to a rezoning application, excuse me, comes to you now and must go to the Board of Commissioners. All right. I don't think that can be varied by contractual agreement. So, working with Mr. Webb, we cooperatively got the variance applications in, in order to permit them to be heard today. All right. The two variances are from AKB, dealing with a planned industrial development in, in AKB, section 2209, C for the loading dock, E for the parking. All right. Now, the loading dock requirement is a little different, because it doesn't just say it has to be located in the rear, it says it must be concealed from view from a neighboring street or property. All right? Now, let's go back. We do not have a definition in AKB of front yard, and here is what Mr. Webb is referring to when he says it's not clear. Look at section 202, general definitions, triple V, which defines front yard. And this is the basis for the question as to whether or not the variance is required. Now, this is not a typical layout, it is not in that the buildings do not front, as I understand it, tell me if I'm wrong, Bolton Parkway, nor do they technically front Jackson Road or Wallace Road. They are located to the, they're located where they're to the side for that. So here's the way we define front yard. "The open space on a lot located between the right-of-way boundary of the abutting street and the frontmost line or portion of an existing structure as extended to the lines on either side. Any yard lying between an abutting street and the building line is considered a front yard." Now, arguably, Mr. Webb is making the case that where you've got your parking located, not in the front yard, because it's not facing an abutting street. Okay? At least on the 100 building. That would not necessarily be the case for the 200 building, and we do not have defined parking for what I assume will be the 300 building?
The park, the employee parking for the 300 building will be on the east side, but it's separated from the right-of-way by that lot we don't know.
By a separate lot. So you technically don't have run front, road front to jump out. And then the definition goes further. For example, in the case of a corner lot, which is abutted on two sides by streets, both yards abutting the streets would be front yards. And other development standards, front yards would apply to both of these. So, the case that you don't have to have a variance, in my view, is stronger for the front yard? Do you agree with that?
I do.
Or that you don't have to have the variances is stronger for parking in the front yard? They do have to have one plainly for the loading dock, as I see it. Now, or the cases for the variance is much greater. So I'm assuming, working with them, that in an abundance of caution, y'all want to be able to make it clear that you can have parking shown on this plat or this design without having to come back or have any question raised later. Okay? That's as good an explanation as I can give.
And that's better than I could do.
The basis of my concern is that three years ago, Bolton Parkway was virgin. Right now, we are on the cusp of becoming 155 between racetrack and quick trip, and I don't want to see that out there. I have Ms. McDaniel either looking up or down at me, depending on what your personal relationship with her was. And I don't want us setting a precedent that we are going to have to continue to live with out there as far as, as far as the loading docks in the front. And when we do this variance, unless there is a way to structure it in which this is the one and only time it ever happens, I'm not in favor of it.
You know, variances are handled on a case-by-case basis, right?
Absolutely.
It's not an issue of precedent like it would be with rezoning. So, the person coming in to make the same case... So the person coming in to make the same case that we are would have to have a building that's about nine hundred feet off AKB. So three football fields, right? That's number one. They'd have to have a piece of property that's about five feet into the, into the overlay with everything else, you know, the, basically the other ninety-five acres outside of the overlay. So I, I hear what you're saying and, but I, looking at this case-by-case, it's hard to imagine, you know, a scenario where somebody would come in with similar facts. Again, all of the loading docks, all the parking that we're talking about are, we're not trying to shield them from Arthur K. Bolton. You're, you're not going to see them from Arthur K. Bolton. This, this little parking lot, the employee parking lot to the west side of Building 100 is probably fifteen hundred feet from Arthur K. Bolton. So again, it, this eight-and-a-half by eleven image doesn't do justice to the amount of land we're talking about here. So we're, we're not going to impact Arthur K. Bolton in any way. We're really talking about more Wallace Road.
We're going to continue to have the screening on AKB.
Absolutely. We're not impacting that at all. And frankly, even the employee parking on the west side of Building 100, as I said, at its, at its closest point is three hundred and sixty feet, one hundred and twenty yards from Wallace Road, and we're going to do some screening and whatnot to, to, to hide that, so.
Well, however council structures the language on this variance, it needs to be done in such a way that nobody else can come in here and say, y'all did so and so.
Understood. I hear what you're saying.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Charles, would you like to do the staff report?
Yes. The applicant, of course, is requesting two variances to consider the approval to allow for loading docks to be located in the front of the building and to allow for parking to be located in the front of the building. After reviewing the application, the staff has determined that placing the loading docks and parking lot in front of the building would be appropriate. This is because there are easements traversing the property which limits the placement of the building. Furthermore, there is also a limited area in the rear to which these cannot be added. Staff sees no direct impact to the AKB corridor as it will be located in no direct view from such. Final staff recommendation, approval of the variance to locate the loading dock and parking in front of the buildings.
Okay. While you're at it, could you go ahead and do your staff report for the, for the rezoning?
You've already recommended approval for that last month.
I thought there was a, we were going to have to re-vote on number nine.
You mean to redo a condition? If that's the case, then you would.
There was some question about whether we had specified everything initially at the first meeting. It's been changed, agreed upon, but I wondered if we needed to vote on-
You, you are better served, as I've told Mr. Webb, that we have the same conditions applied to the rezoning and to the variances.
There was discussion, correct, on number nine, and there was a little, a little squiggle there.
Right. So, so the, the language that you guys added to your motion is basically the last sentence of this number nine. I just added it to what I proposed to you guys last time. Regardless of what you do on that condition, we're going to propose it exactly the way, you know, you guys said it a month ago. So if, if you don't reopen it and this language is going to, we've already submitted this to the county, right? I mean, it's, it, it was part of the motion, your motion of approval on the zoning, and we, we, we were fine with it.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure we were, we were good on number nine.
Actually, I made that motion and, and asked for that amendment. So this language very much replicates what my intention was.
All right. Well, that being said, we will vote on the variances individually, I suppose. So I'll entertain a motion for twenty-three, twenty-three dash twenty-six V.
With some hesitancy, but with an understanding of the situation geographically, I think a motion to approve as requested.
With the conditions and the staff recommendations.
With the conditions of the staff as recommended would be appropriate.
Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, those in favor signify, raise your right hand. Okay, I'll entertain a motion for twenty-three dash twenty-six V eight.
I would recommend approval of the request as specified with the staff's report.
Staff conditions?
As staff conditions and recommendations.
Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Second, Mr. Harris. Those in favor signify, raise your right hand. Thank you. All right. LLC owner Troy Beckham, agent, 3000 South Sixth Street, approximately seven point zero nine five acres located in landlot 184 in the second district. The applicant is requesting a rezoning from AR1 agricultural and residential to R1 single-family low-density. This will allow the applicant to subdivide the lot, subdivide the lot into three individual parcels. Do we have someone here to speak for that?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Name and address for the record.
Troy Beckham Senior, eighteen sixty-six Highway 362 West, Williamson, Georgia.
Okay. Get to the paperwork here. All right, here we go.
We're proposing that seven acres do be rezoned for monetary value of our investment of the property so that we can build three residents. We're looking to subdivide into equal, three equal lots with the exception of the corner of county line and South Sixth Street, it being a tad bit larger at two point six acres for the hundred-foot setbacks. Just didn't know, you know, here to answer any questions or, and asking the committee for the approval for the monastic, monetary value of the property.
Okay. Do you have any questions at this point?
I do. The first question I have is, how will the, ax, the two properties that are within the par, parcel access, have access?
Off of county line, right. Actually, I'm looking to propose all three off of county line, unless the county won't allow it for the corner lot.
Okay.
Then we would propose to come off of South Sixth Street, possibly.
And what, what do you know about the drainage situation in that vicinity? What can you tell us?
According to our survey, from the insurance of FEMA, it is not in a flood zone. It is a dry bed, according to Larry Sibley survey. And that is coming from June the seventh of two thousand seventeen, per the plat.
Frank, you got any questions?
Yeah, I didn't understand the money part you said when you first came in here.
I'm, I'm, we are just proposing that we were able to build three homes versus two, just as the investment of the property that we had, which would allow us to be monetarily in better shape with three lots versus two. Our proposal is to keep the homes in the same square footage and property value the same as the surrounding area, from two thousand to twenty-five hundred square feet, ranging anywhere from four to five hundred thousand.
Do we have anybody signed up to speak on this issue?
We do. Hang on.
Okay. No, I'm good right now, but I will likely keep the option to talk to you again, okay?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
All right. If you will sit down, we have several people signed up.
Yes, sir.
Morgan Fordham. Mr. Fordham, if you will, come forward, state your name and your address for the record, please.
Yes, I'm Morgan Fordham. I live on twenty-sixty South Sixth Street Extension. Okay. The, the current property is, is zoned AR1, and it's been AR1. Okay? So the burden of proof is on him to determine why it should be converted to R1, and we believe it shouldn't. Well, everybody, as opposed, please stand up and support this.
Hey.
This is just a small group of, okay? I just wanted you to know, okay? This is just a small group.
We got it.
Okay, okay. The, the AR1 will allow him to build two houses, okay? But if you look at the, I have a, a map right here that shows you, if he puts three houses on here with all this surrounding land like it is, it's going to look very peculiar, if not terrible. Okay? So we have been, I've been out here thirty-four years, built a house out here and lived under the covenants of AR1 zoning, okay? So the burden of, so actually, who benefits from this? Okay? He's building one more house for him. He benefits. Nobody else benefits. My neighbors and I think this is a bad idea, okay? He can build two houses, but why, why allow three? Also, if you come up from the Campbells, who are more toward Orchard Hill, you come to a hill there, okay? There's a hill, and you don't get to see tho, that part of those land until you're at the crest of that hill. And he's talking about putting three driveways right there with people going fifty-five miles an hour at the crest of the hill. That's a dangerous situation, okay? Any way you look at it. So the burden of proof is on him, and I don't believe he's proved that. I mean, it's a financial gain for him, but it's a lot, it's a distraction for all the neighbors. Okay? That's all I have to say.
Okay. Thank you. May I speak on that thing? Just hold on, we'll give you a chance to respond.
Bob Bug?
I've got one handout, one handout, and I'd like to get to each of you. Name's Bob or Robert. Bug, twenty-ninety South Sixth Street Extension, and our property actually abuts the, the property there, so I'd like to pass this out. I have enough copies for everybody. I've got enough to do.
Thank you.
Everybody want to get the man, I still have one for that.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
I got hang on one second.
That's all right, Bob. You're good.
Charles?
I took, I took a look at the staff report, and we'd like to maybe push back on that just a little bit. Some of this is to, to Morgan's point, is that it is all out there zoned AR1. So we are looking at a property that is essentially non-conforming. If you wanted AR1, there's, or R1, there's as much R1 as one wants across the street where you have a drive, you have a front entrance, curb and gutter, got the amenities in the front. There's not anything in here that is proposed that, that deals with that. What is kind of left out of maybe the report, even though there's R1 across the street, everything that is north of county line, east of Sixth Street, and on East Maddox, all of that is AR1. The lot itself, that lot's been vacant since before nineteen eighty-nine, and one might want to ask, you know, why the lot is vacant? I think it's a real legitimate question. And the various owners that have had it have never even produced a site plan, own it, and have deemed it to be unbuildable. When he purchased the property, he knew what it was when he bought it, and maybe should have checked on the zoning prior to that. Do believe it can change the character of what we have on that side of Sixth Street and also along East Maddox and, and all. And once it's zoned, if it were to be approved as R1, when I read the R1 zoning requirements, if other variances are asked for, it opens a whole Pandora's Box for what else could possibly put, be put on that property. And so that's all I'll speak to as far as that is concerned. My other that I heard that is abs, that I appreciate Ms. Upshaw bringing up, the middle lot there, and this is what I passed out to each of you all. We have been there since two thousand and one. This is probably one of the only times, meaning sometimes this time of year, that that middle lot, there's that tree line that you see in there, it is marked as CIB on what I handed out to each of you. There's four one, four point one acres between his lot and our lot. It virtually always has standing water in there. In the old days, when I spoke to Ms. Morales, there's not an agreement between Spalding County and Lamar County to take the water runoff. It's just that this whole area on the backside from Maddox Road on down is a wetlands area, and the stuff just simply flows downhill. And that middle lot right there, two point six acres, which has just recently been bought, and the one point five acres of tree line that is ours, that serves as the water runoff for eleven acres of land, which includes his land, our land, and some of Mr. Fordham's land, who just got through speaking, own that. The dirt that is in there, what little I know about hydrology, is CIB. That is grade D dirt. That's deemed unbuildable. There is virtually always the presence of water. There are plant vegetation down there that is associated with wetlands. You can see it virtually any time of year. In the past twenty years, I head down to either Akins and now to Smith Farms at the beginning of the spring to buy the mosquito pellets, just to keep the mosquitoes under control. The water, when that thing is full, comes up to the edge of, of our, our property. I've had several times have a boom truck that I use in my rental business where we be trimming up trees. That boom truck will get stuck at the edge of the wood line because of the moisture content that that land holds. The other thing that I would, would say is, and I'll try to make this real quick, I, I guess, maybe a lot of you know this, or some that are, that are on the board that's got more engineering background than, than I have, but I do understand that, what is it? That one, one inch of rain, of continuous rain, will essentially make up for twenty-seven thousand gallons of water. And I mentioned earlier, this is a drained basin for eleven acres. So when we have one inch of rain, that drain basin gets three hundred thousand gallons of water. And just for perspective-
Okay. Thanks.
Okay. Can, I, am I not, can someone else yield their time, or?
No.
Okay.
Kent Bug?
My name is Kent Bug. I live virtually right around the corner, eight thirty-eight East Maddox. I'm quite familiar with this property as I grew up here. So everything that they've talked about as far as the drainage and where all this water sits, probably the person most familiar with that would be me, as I was in it. familiar with that would be me, as I was in it, pretty much virtually all my life. So to put that in perspective, you know, my opinion on it is, if we're looking to put houses here and stack 'em up, I mean, we used to float canoes in that, John boats, and as previously mentioned, I mean, there's just, there's a lot there, so I don't see how that would be a proper building place for anything to set on. I think probably the best use for it honestly would be a pond, which if it was me, that's what I would turn it into. Aside from that, I do worry about having three houses there, what that does to the value of all the houses around that. I know when I paid for my house on East Maddox, if that were to be built, you know, adjacent to me, that would, I mean severely decrease my property value. I figure most of the people here would probably tend to agree with that. So, that being said, that's kinda what I wanted to touch on, is just the fact that I don't think it is a, I mean, it's not good soul. If you go try to stand in it, you're gonna sink. Really doesn't even take a boom truck to get stuck. I mean, I've driven around that area recently and gotten a, you know, Chevy Silverado stuck multiple times. You know, going around towards the road on that is even deeper. I've ridden dirt bikes through it, I mean, water up to here at times on me, four-wheelers, all that kinda stuff. So how you could have an actual structure sitting there, you know, is kinda beyond me, and I guess that's why we're all here, and for y'all to decide. Thank you.
Robert Sullins.
Yeah, Robert Sullins, eleven thirty-three Pine Valley Road. I've driven down this road my whole life. We've had property past Canaline Road, beautiful property, beautiful houses. He's talking about monetary value, I'm tired of those arguments. Property next to me in town was sold under one zoning. The city zoning disapproved it, but the city commissioners decided to go on and approve it. So instead of a hundred and forty houses, I got two hundred and twenty houses going next to my property. I pay tax money, y'all do all these studies on zoning and everything, everything's based on that, traffic, waste treatment, water runoff, sewage, stormwater. But then, just out of the blue, somebody says, well, I can make more money if I can put one more lot, or forty more houses. They bought the property under AR one. Why should they earn more money changing it to R one and put in one more lot? Makes absolutely no sense. I also lost a son right on that intersection, right before where they're gonna put those two driveways. I hope, I know what y'all are gonna do. I hope the city commissioners, I mean, the county commissioners, follow y'all's opinion. Thank you.
Mouchet.
Thank you.
The acoustics here is terrible. I can't hear anything. I live, my name is Annette Mouchet, I'm at one oh nine Runnymede Road, and I think I've been there pretty close to be the longest person living in that area. The blessing of it is that most people come in and they honor the way we live. It's quiet, they don't try to stack up a lot of cars and all that kinda thing, and buildings, et cetera. The other thing is, I remember Robert Sullins, and when you look, look at that map up there, and you see where the driveways are coming out, and this is not indicative of, it doesn't seem the same unless you're riding up that hill. Those driveways are very close to that intersection, and the other driveway, the other driveway will be up on Sixth Street. This is another accident waiting to happen. These are good people who came into this area looking for peace and quiet and honored it. Are we going to disobey that honor and start adding more, adding more and more? And one of the things that I think precedences are, happen all the time. We aren't, we, we're not neglecting anything by not setting precedence. Anyway, we would appreciate you considering those, and considering the homes and lives of the people who live out in that area, and have been there for a long, long time. And the intersection there is dangerous, and most people honor it. We, as people in the area, they stop and wait and wait for another person to go through, so it's a good system. Let's leave it the way it is, and we would appreciate your considering that. Thank you so much.
That's all that have signed up this evening, Mr. Chairman.
Did you wanna come up and respond to anything?
Yes, sir. First and foremost, my wife and I are not looking to step on its toes or take any precedence from anyone. Relating to the driveway, that is a hill there, I've actually pulled over on the furthest lot on side of the road, and in my rearview, I could plainly see vehicles coming to you back onto the highway. As far as the wetlands, I hate to say this, but I'd hate to disagree with it, because I went there after a torrential rain, and there was not waste deep water. Per my survey company, it is a dry bed. I'm not displaying the fact that it is a drain off for all of it, but it is a slight incline or decline. It's less than two feet, and a couple hundred feet, if you look at the topo on it. And as far as the driveways, I mean, it's no different than any other driveway on County Line Road or Sixth, South Sixth Street Extension. I get the concern, and I get it. And as far as stacking homes upon each other, we are not looking to stack homes upon each other. We're looking to keep the monetary value of the homes with the homes in the radius, within a five mile radius of it. So as far as property values, we don't see where it's gonna depreciate anyone's property values. We're not looking to do starter homes, we're looking to do high-end custom homes. And that's what we would like to submit to the county, to the committee.
Thank you.
And the county.
Thank you.
Charles, can you be important?
Yes, again, this, this application is to rezone from AR one agricultural, agriculture to R one, single-family residential, low density, and I'll go straight to the recommendation upon your request. Staff recommends approval with the following conditions. Number one, minimum house size shall be two thousand heated square feet. Condition number two, no vinyl siding. Condition number three, lots two and three shall require a plan to mitigate any runoff. The plan shall be presented to staff for approval before building permits are applied for.
Okay, thank you, Charles. Mr. Harris, you have some thoughts?
I have thoughts. I live out in this area, and we don't have many two thousand square foot houses out there, not that that's relevant. But this is an area, and many of my neighbors, and many of the people that have had the determination to come up here tonight and talk, have talked about trying to keep parts of the county the way they are. A lot of the county has changed. I'm sorry that somebody convinced you that you could build three houses there, but that's my thought, and I think it's inappropriate rezoning for that area.
Okay. Is that true?
Yes, I am equally concerned about the reason why, I made the comment earlier about how the people were gonna get in there. The topography and the distance between the intersection and those driveways give me some pause. And I know that whenever you see a pipe that's running underneath the road, and it's going from upper to lower, you're directing water into that land. Just because it's not on a flood map doesn't mean it doesn't flood. It just means that it hasn't been, either been studied, or it means that it has been studied and not been found to be a flooded area, that it meets the criteria for being certified for insurance for flood by the federal government. There's a difference between things that don't flood and things that are on flood maps. So just looking at the topography and everything, it looks like across track two, you're gonna look at it like a, more like a nine-foot drop from the highest point to the lowest I'm very concerned about you putting all of your energy and interest, and then we follow up with a rezoning for something that you really can't do. You have two good lots that you can put two good houses on, on the current zoning, and without going through the heartache of going through this zoning, going through the, all of the studies that would be required, and then getting turned down for a building permit because it would not meet the requirements for drainage. That being the case, I don't think it's appropriate to approve this zoning.
I share a lot of the feelings from my fellow commissioners up here. I've been driving by this property for probably thirty, thirty-five years, and I don't know what you call it, but most of the time, there's a pond of water up there on top of that hill, and I've always thought that was kind of unusual. This morning, I went over there and parked and actually walked up to where the old barn is, and took note of the aquatic weeds that are growing that we've not had enough rain to flood it, but there are rushes and things like that up here on top of the hill. And I really worry that even two houses built over there, there's gonna be some unhappiness about where the water goes. And so I share the same feeling that, you know, you've got two nice houses that you could potentially build there, and so I really can't support this rezoning. Is there any other discussion?
I don't want to be.
If there's no other discussion, I'll entertain a motion.
I move to deny this particular petition.
Have a motion to deny?
I second that motion.
Okay. Have a second. Those in favor signify by raising your right hand. Okay, it's denied. Okay, what date will that go before the commissioners?
November sixth.
I'm sorry?
November the sixth. It goes before the board of commissioners. All right. We'll give the room a chance to. We still have another item on the agenda, so if you will move on quietly, we'll continue. Okay, item number three on the agenda.
Because I have a financial interest. I'll ask you later.
Item number three on the agenda, twenty-three dash sixteen S. Belinda Ligon, owner, Maurice Ligon agent, forty-three fifty Fayetteville Road, approximately point five seven acres located in landlot one eleven of the fourth district. The applicant is requesting a special exception for a home occupation general to be able to operate as a gunsmith. We have someone here to speak to you.
I'm Maurice. I'm Maurice Ligon, and I live at forty-three fifty Fayetteville Road. So I'm here requesting a special exception because when I first applied and got my business license, probably two years ago, close to three years ago, that wasn't a special exception that I had to do. So I had my license for about a year, or close to a year, and when I got ready to renew, I was called in and said that I had to maybe apply for a special exception, when typically my business, well, my home is only used as an office, where I keep my paperwork, my files, and stuff like that. My business is mainly run online or at different venues that we host and put on. I teach gunsmithing from when I graduated, so I teach it, I host events, plus I'm a certified firearms instructor. So I do a lot of firearms training at different ranges, different events, and I'm a range safety officer. So at some events, I have to go, because I'm independent, I go in and I monitor the range, make sure everybody's operating safely. So when it came up to renew, let me, let me jump back. I supposed to have been in that first group, I think it was like five gunsmills that came in, and they had to do a special exception. So I was supposed to be in that group, but somehow I didn't, I think I didn't know ahead of time, and I missed the deadline, so they told me to wait and then reapply. So now when I went back, after my license expired, I went back to reapply, then she said, just do the special exception. And I asked her, you know, since mainly my business is just for my office, and everything's kinda online on the way, and I do a lot of traveling. She said, well, it just kinda helps you in case you decide to grow in the future. So that's why I applied for the special exception, just to go ahead and just be in compliance with everything, and kinda not have to keep going back and forth, you know, with what's going on. And at the same time, I'm friends with my neighbors on the right, the left, behind me. The neighbors across the street, I really don't know, they know me, because they've told the neighbors next door, you know, about me, you know, our children, and I was surprised to know that, but like I said, we've never had a problem. No one even knows that I run a business. They only found out that I run a business when the sign was put out about the meeting today, so that's when they was looking at it, that, you know, I'm a gunsmith, I operate a gunsmith business. Because we took every measure to make sure that safety is our number one priority.
So you don't sell any guns at all at the house?
Not at my house, not at this moment. I thought about it maybe in the future, but I don't have to now, because I'm what you call an affiliate. I promote a lot of products, and then I have a link, or I get a number, and people go to either this website, they order, they order, you know how affiliate works, I get paid. I also work with several other firearms dealers locally and surrounding counties. So if someone wants to purchase, and I send them, then I get my commission or my profits from that. So I don't have to store any firearms at my home now, which I don't now anywhere except for my personal firearms, which is about four or five of them. Rest of the time, you know, like I say, I get more affiliate stuff. As far as gunsmithing goes, I work with different gunsmithing companies, so I would go to their shop, that's where we do a lot of the work. I do most of their marketing. Like I said, if you know about affiliate, I am a videographer and photographer, so I do most of the marketing, I do most of their films and commercials and things of that nature.
So do you work across state lines then?
I do.
Okay, so do you have a federal license, or how does that work?
I do have a federal license. I do have a federal license, which allows me to go across state line, especially when I have to demo a product. So if I have to demo different products to different businesses, dealers or stores, then that allows me to cross state line.
Yeah, okay, good, thank you. Anybody got any more questions?
I've just got a comment. You're coming in with a home occupation category that we've been burned on really big time before. And I'm not saying you've got any matches with you, but I'm just saying that, that this is, if you go through with this and if you are able to do this, you need to be sneaky, squeaky clean in the way you do your business.
I went by there today.
Because we got burned really big time. In fact, the guy wound up having to leave the county. I mean, he was a good, good gunsmith, just didn't, you know, the problem with ordinances, it's like I tell people, it's like the ten commandments, not the ten suggestions, it's the ten commandments. And ordinances are the same way. Everybody has to live by the same ordinance. And that's the kind of country I want to live in because I don't want one set of ordinance for these guys over there, the writing big checks and another set for me. But I don't have any questions of you. I'll, I'll hush right now, but I just wanted you to know that I'm glad to have you here. You sound like you're pretty smart. We need good, smart gunsmiths here. Got a lot of redneck people running around that aren't, so. I'm good, thank you.
No, I'm fine.
Charles, you got a report?
Yes. Staff recommends conditional approval with the following conditions. Condition number one, no exterior signage. Number two, fire marshal inspections of the premise. Three, any felony conviction must be reported within ten business days.
You live with those conditions?
Yes.
If there's no other discussion, I'll entertain a motion.
I move this special exception be granted.
With the conditions?
With the conditions per staff, thank you.
No firearms, fire license and self-defense. I'll second that.
I have a motion and a second. Those in favor signify by raising your right hand. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we can skip the minutes tonight, correct? Charles, you have any comment?
Well, yes, I do. There will be a meeting, there'll be a meeting for you all on November twenty-first. Just let you all know, that is the week of Thanksgiving. But no meeting in December. So just a reminder.
Okay, excellent. All righty. The board of the commissioners, you got something you want to sound off? You pretty much sounded off tonight, right?
No, I did exactly what I thought Martha McDaniel would have wanted me to do if she'd been sitting in that chair. I have a lot of trepidation about the stuff that's going on out on the Bolton Parkway. And I really think that everything that goes out there, and as much as I know the county needs to add a firearm tax, we cannot let that thing get away from us like they've done up in Henry County. I mean, it's, it's just, it's, it's driving, it's an autonomous vehicle and it's an eighteen-wheeler.
All right.
Thank you.
Ms. Uptrou, you got something to complain about?
Nothing, no complaints, no new announcements, no concerns.
All right, well, I will be brief because I do have a couple of complaints and they both deal with how Spalding County looks. And it always happens in the months that I go to Atlanta multiple times and I have to go up the North Expressway, and that was the case this month. And the trailer place at Sunnyside, we either need a tornado to come through there or we need code enforcement to go up there. The, at least they could park the trailers in fairly neat rows. When you go by there, it looks like the tornado has already visited and it's just an iso, both sides of the road, actually.
Looks like crap.
And then directly north of that, the friendly homeowner used car place, they had the whole lot covered with cars. I'm talking about the entire grass area, the gravel area, the paved area and everything behind the building. And I thought we had put a few teeth in there that there was a percentage of vehicles that you could have and they needed to be on pavement and stuff like that.
What's the name?
It's like neighborhood car whatever.
This is the one that, what's this?
It's just below the Dollar General that's up there.
Below Dollar General?
Below, below it, before you get.
South of it, yeah, south of it.
Yeah.
On the right hand?
On the left as you head out of town.
On the left, right, correct.
But anyway, they are certainly two huge isolars. And I've told Dr. Steve about this twice too, while I'm complaining, I'll finish up, go for the triple crown here. I noticed the trash trucks going up and down Arthur K. Bolton and about half the time they don't have, they've emptied their load, but they don't put the screen back. And so any trash that's caught in the bin of the thing makes its way out and is on Arthur K. Bolton. And it's city trucks, it's county trucks, it's private trucks. And I don't see why we couldn't issue some fines to the county or the city or whoever. I mean, just a simple thing is to flip the screen back when they're headed out of the dump would save immensely on the pickup out there.
Now, that's the one that's off the Bolton Parkway?
It's, well, the transfer station is an offender because they take it and go to Barnesville, I think. But there are a lot of, lot of companies that use, they're headed down to Barnesville to the dump down there. And the offense seems to come when they've actually emptied their load.
You know, Dr. Ludwitt and I have just chatted about this occasionally. But one of the things that's killing us in this county is all of this heavy traffic eating up our roads. I go on county line road quite a bit simply because the guy that works on my chainsaws is in Orchard Hill. And there's a sign, as you exit oh forty-one, onto that says, no through trucks. And I stopped and talked with the deputy roads the other day about that. And I said, you know, if we're gonna have the sign, I said, to me, it's like the cell phone thing. Why have the damn ordinance if you can't afford to enforce it? And if we say no through trucks, there ought to be a thousand dollar fine the second time somebody comes through there. And we ought to put on the sign, thousand dollar fine. And that thousand dollars doesn't mean we're gonna give it to you and you can say fine, it's meaning we're gonna collect it from you. I think if, back when I was a teenager, best part of my life, didn't know it, we'd go through Odom, Georgia, going to the beach, but you knew damn well going through Odom, to be, you better slow your ass down because if you didn't, you were figured to contribute to the city's coffers.
Ludawissee was the bad.
Well, and Ludawissee too. But, you know, we just get easy. And another problem is that we don't have the money for enforcement, for deputies and all that, but.
Well, Frank, when I was a kid.
I don't know what recommendation we need to make, but I'm not happy with the way things are, but I don't think it's necessarily our fault, but that still doesn't mean I have to be happy about it because it isn't our fault.
Well, when I was a kid, they had littering signs, it was fifty thousand dollars or a hundred thousand dollars and they still littered everything, so.
Maybe we need to get some of the judges to do like they used to do, pull them in and then stick them out on that chair in front of the courthouse, you know, litterer or scumbag or whatever city was making them put on their forehead.
All right, I hope the can of worms.
Is there any such thing?
You opened a good can of worms. We all ought to go fishing.
I've always, now that you've opened the worms, I'm going fishing. I've always, since we moved here, been concerned about the littering. And I don't know, there used to be, when I was growing up in Cobb County and my mother was born in Ludawissee. But it, there were, there were citizens, citizen enforcers. You know, you didn't carry a gun, but you did have a little pad. You could write up a violation if you noticed it and you could hand a piece of paper and then you turned in your book to the county. And the county would do or not do whatever they could or couldn't do about it. But I don't, I don't know whether we've moved so into the advanced community now that we are that we can't do that. I don't, you know, I would, I would be afraid if I were given the opportunity, honestly, to try to run somebody down for throwing stuff out of their truck or car, so.
Probably only shoot them a couple of times.
Yeah, well, wouldn't take much. Anyway, I, I agree with you, I wish we could do something about it and I agree, but I know the limitations of inspections and enforcement.
They will mow and pick up and it will look gorgeous down through there and like three days later, it's like, and it just blows off those trucks.
And somehow diapers blow out of cars.
Newton wants us to worry about severe problems. All right.
No, John, I was gonna suggest that we see if Salem, Massachusetts has a deal on stocks so we could bring them down and let Frank put the folks in front of the courthouse in lieu of the chair that.
No, we need the.
Judge Essery did.
The judge Essery used to have where he put the folks from state court out on the front steps.
The Group W bench?
Pardon me?
The Group W bench, that's what it.
Just as an aside, the board of commissioners did approve for probably ninety-five percent of our roads to be listed as no commercial through traffic. And our code enforcement officer is writing tickets, plural, daily for commercial vehicles. And to the board, you're absolutely right. Our commercial trucks traveling on our county roads are destroying our county roads. And kudos to Marshall Johnson for the work that he is performing to help curb that. I would encourage our community, if you were driving a commercial vehicle between now and the end of this week, not to do so on Jackson Road because I can tell you that's probably where he's going to be sitting for the next couple of days. He has been on the south side of our community on Macon Road, on County Line Road over the course of the last few days, so he is actively working the, that particular case.
Tell us about Marshall Johnson because I'm not familiar with him.
He is our only code enforcement officer right now and he is doing a wonderful job.
Is he a marshal?
He, he is a certified police officer.
So his name is Marshall?
No, his name is Mark.
Mark.
Johnson.
But he is a marshal.
That's correct. He is a certified police officer in the state of Georgia and he can stop, legally stop vehicles. And that is, that's a big deal for us because it affords us the chance to stop our commercial trucks that are traveling on roads that they are not authorized to do so and actively serve them with a citation.
I think Maddox Road has just been eaten up by the eighteen-wheelers too. And they're coming through there going to Orchard Hill to one particular business. And I don't think we give hall passes to anybody.
I have a kudo for the county. The paving of South Hill Street before some of the more high-dollar hauler places got paved really impressed me and I just want to say thank you.
Thank you for that. The T-Sploß is actually working for our community this year. Just this year during this paving season, we will have completed twenty-three miles of resurfacing for our county roads. Last year we did a little over twenty-one miles, so the program is actually working well. Please be a little patient with us. The temporary striping that is down right now is just paint. The subcontractor has to allow time for the asphalt to cure before we put down the thermoplasty, which is very reflective. And the thermoplasty will be placed on the roads probably within the next thirty to sixty days and those roads are just gonna sparkle. And I agree with you, kudos are much needed for the team, they've done a great job.
Absolutely. And in my experience with Fulton County and the city of Atlanta, both would always go to high-dollar hauler first because they were the ones who could influence. And the poor folk didn't get a new road and I just, I love that idea.
We, we have, we have a list of roads that we are following based on engineering requirements and we are following that list to the T. We are not varying from that list at all. In fact, if you want to know what is on the list for years three, four and five of our T-Sploß, please come by and see me, I'll be more than happy to provide you with a copy.
Great, thank you.
I noticed something this morning. I was going to Fayetteville and on ninety-two between, before you really get out of the city limits, on the curb side where you would ordinarily have that stripe with a blur, this one's like that wide, but it's not painted. And if I'd been by myself, I would have gone over that or see what kind of noise it would make. But it's before you get to, it's, it's really right past First Assembly, before you get to Howard Fowler's junkyard up there. But it's, it was interesting, as I said, it was about at least six inches wide. The conventional stuff that you see with the paint on it, I would say is maybe a little more than four inches, something like that. I mean, this was really wide but, and in the surface, but no paint on.
We need to entertain a motion to adjourn.
Wait a minute, one more thing, John. You asked about the trailer, the travel camper place.
Yes.
That is in Sunnyside.
But they don't have any government anymore.
Okay, as I was about to say, the city of Sunnyside will cease to exist January one and the county at that point will have to exercise zoning authority over all property in the city of Sunnyside. So at that point, the county will have authority over the travel trailers, okay?
And the car place too?
I'm trying to place the car place.
It's, it's just past the trailer place on the left as you're headed north.
Are we recording now or are we all?
Yes, it's being recorded.
It's where the guy was doing the auto restoration and he came in here and gave us the song and dance to get the license renewed and then he turned around and sold it to a used car.
I remember when that, when that happened, the song and dance was not Broadway quality, but I remember its performance.
It was off-Broadway.
But all, all the property in Sunnyside will have to have a zoning classification placed upon it at the termination of the city's charter. So we will be dealing with that. Eva and Charles and I have discussed and I've brought Dr. Steve up to speed. The county will put a moratorium on any rezoning for property in what is now Sunnyside.
That's good.
And then during that moratorium, all the property will come back to this board first and then to the board of commissioners for the application of zoning districts on it.
Okay, this is aside from that, but I noticed Bear Metals has had to put a privacy fence up around their place and it was much needed. But the little metal recycling. But the little metal recycling place up there at Sunnyside, that is-
The forklift graveyard?
No, this is just before you get to Woody's Chain Shop, Chainsaw Shop. The little place there where they just come and dump it right there on the side of the road.
That's the one that changed, that's the one that changed hands, I think.
Yeah.
Well, well, soon we'll have sidewalks to make access to those places on nineteen forty-one easier. But we, we are also having, I provided to, and this is something that fell through the cracks to some degree. The forklift graveyard is the subject of consent order coming out of magistrate court with which they have not complied. And because of turnover and so forth, it's not Charles's fault, it's not Eva's fault. We've had no code enforcement to get up there.
Well, they seem to have a lot more junk up there than just forklifts all of a sudden.
Oh, there it is.
Well, it was sold. The forklift, the forklift junkyard owner sold it. And it became-
A junkyard?
No, not a junkyard. It became a recycling facility. It's not, a junkyard, I assume tied to cars, but this, this has more than that.
Somebody has all of this stuff that I sent to the county back when they were loading stuff. And then unfortunately, I lost all of that when I changed phones. But I mean, I sent at least six color photos of the stuff that was going on up in there. And I like for us to be responsive to that. I have two daughters, and they come in and out of the North Expressway. And I got on the BZA because I thought maybe I could make a distance, and my child, children might want to come back and live here. They both did. But it looks like the devil up there. Looks like the devil's in charge. And he's not, or she's not.
They're just trying to make a dollar, Frank.
Well, just like the guy that came in and wanted three houses, you know, just trying to make a dollar.
Okay, motion to adjourn.
I thought we ought to have that. I seconded that.
I make a motion that we would adjourn?
I second. Those in favor? Frank voted, I think.
Yeah. Could we instruct somebody to, uh-